Okay, good afternoon, everyone. It is now four thirty in the afternoon on this beautiful Wednesday, April 6, 2016. We shall begin our council meeting. May I please have a roll call?
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Randy Funker.
Here.
Brad Hent.
Here.
Greg Gills.
Here.
Zach Sawyer.
Here.
Thank you. First on the agenda is public comments. I would like to point out that if you have any public comments regarding items that are on the agenda, such as the Sheldon Municipal Airport Hangar Project, you may have those comments at that time when we open the public hearing. Also, number four, we will open a public hearing regarding the general obligation capital loan notes. So if you have a comment regarding those, you may wait until we open those public hearings. If there's any other public comments, now would be the time to step up to the podium, share your name, your comment. There are none, we will move forward to the consent agenda. Are there any questions, comments?
The only thing I have on number three, they do have to contact the county and the fire department.
Right.
So they don't call us out there when it's a controlled burn.
Yep. One thing that Rob Roseboom did say when Rice Fest requested their controlled burn, they will call the appropriate people, especially fire departments, let them know when that'll happen.
We concur, if I'm wrong, we put that in our letter.
Okay.
To them, if it were to be approved, what the requirements are.
Right.
Make sure those are followed.
And even before that, he had said that he would do this.
I didn't get what he was saying.
He was asking about the request for the controlled burn for the Rice Fest grounds, the ditches. He just asked that they inform the appropriate people, such as fire, EMA, etc.
County.
County, yep.
County and police.
Yep. And then, in his response to his letter, Scott provided the information that we would need from them when that happens. So, thank you. Are there any other questions? I will make a comment regarding the resignation of our SCAT director, Cindy Freeman, has done a wonderful job for our city, and we give her great thanks for the time and service that she has given. With that said, any comments? None? We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Support.
Thank you. Last request for comments. Just want to make sure, Tham, may I have a roll call, please?
Funker.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Thank you. Going into new business, we will now open the public hearing on the Sheldon Municipal Airport Six-T Hangar Project. At this time, if there are public comments, you may step up to the podium, share your name, and your public comment, if there are any. The baby has a comment. I didn't understand it. Okay, I will consider that, no comments. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing regarding the Sheldon Municipal Airport Six-T Hangar Project?
So moved.
There are seconds?
Support.
Thank you. Roll call to close the public hearing.
Funker.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
We welcome babies, you're fine. We'll even kiss them. On the next part is considering the approval of plans and specs in the form of a contract. Scott will share some of that information a little bit further before we go into, we can approve this now.
Yeah, yep, this is the item, basically the form of contract or whatever is specified items for the bid items. The engineer's estimate on the project is, the base bid was $364,025. Bid addition number one for insulation, engineer's estimate was $2,500. Bid addition number two, wall paneling, was $10,000. Bid addition number three, roof drainage, was $7,500. And for bid addition number four, pedestrian walk-through doors, engineer's estimate was at $3,000.
Thank you.
So we'll entertain any questions that you have in regards to plans and specifications.
Questions? If there are none, then do we have a?
Just no explanation for the, I mean, we're exceeding in all cases, is that right? Am I reading that right?
Pardon?
The low bid is exceeding the estimates in all cases, or am I reading that wrong?
Yeah, and we'll get into the, I guess, the award if you want to go through those items or whatever. This is just basically the estimated items or whatnot. If you recall, well, this is the second time we've bid this.
Right.
We did make some changes and modifications, kind of tried to work with the insurance company on what was code compliant, code required, as part of this project. So, yeah, the bid, as you'll see, and we'll review that too, or whatever, still did come back higher than what the engineer's estimate was.
And there's also that note, irregular bid submitted, incorrect summation, that those are highlighted, and I'm just seeing this now, so.
Correct. Those were by the time when they submitted their bids, we submitted, and then the actual engineers go through item, line item by line item, and it was small variations, basically on the unit prices didn't match up with what the total price was.
Okay.
So basically, their addition was wrong on a couple of the items.
Okay. But the bids are still good?
Yes.
Okay.
They still, and I have in front of you the letter of recommendation from McClure Engineering, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Greg. Any other questions regarding the plans and specifications? If not, do we have a motion to approve those plans, specifications, and form of contract?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Last request for comments? May I have a roll call, please?
Gills.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
And before we go into the consideration of the contract, we do want to keep in mind that this would be contingent upon insurance approval. So with that said, I'll go a little bit further on the recommendations of the airport on some items they would like to add in.
Yeah, just to review the bid items, as you're aware, when we went back, we rebid it. Last time we bid it, we were probably about $100,000, $105,000 over what the engineer's estimate was. We did go back and had a conversation with the insurance adjuster to modify some of the items as far as what could be included, not included. Spoke with the engineer, or the insurance adjuster actually as of today. He appears to be okay with it, but he wants some more time to review it and actually give it to his boss to make sure they concur. So, as the mayor mentioned, this award would be contingent upon the insurance adjustment approval. What we are anticipating, and just to quickly go through the bids, we did receive three bids on the project, one from L&amp;L Builders. Their base bid amount was $481,012. Jensen Builders on the base bid was $452,619. And the apparent low bidder was Shell Savores contracting out of Fairfield, Iowa. Their low bid, base bid, was $412,835.20. The airport commission met, actually after our bid opening, is their recommendation, and also the recommendation of award from McClure Engineering to award the base bid to Shell Savores contracting, the amount of $412,835.20, anticipating that the insurance as part of the award there would cover that entire base bid. The airport commission would also like to include two bid additions, with the understanding that they would, via the airport commission, would potentially have to cover those costs. And that is bid addition number one. That number was for the insulation, that was $4,674, as well as bid addition number four, the pedestrian walk-through doors, and the number on that was $5,236. They felt these two items, if they wanted to include them at any point in time, it's better to do it now as part of the project. Those are items they probably would not add on later. If they wanted to do the wall paneling, or the roof drainage for the gutters and spouts, that's something at a later date. If they still wanted to, they could add that on later. The airport commission, based on those two bid additions, would have the funds available to cover that cost. So that is my recommendation to the council for consideration.
Do any of you have a question or a comment?
So we're pretty sure the insurance is going to cover the base bid?
Yes. Pretty sure is the correct terminology, yeah. We had a prior conversation before we rebid it. You know, they had questions about the vault room. We actually modified, shrunk the size of that a little bit, but the information that we provided back to them was all mainly due to code compliance. It was smaller before, but now we can't build it that small. The equipment doesn't even fit in there yet enough room to operate. So they have concurred on it, contingent upon us actually receiving the bids. If it's not approved, we'll have to go back to the airport commission, and of course, come back to city council if they don't approve the $412,000. That's why we're doing contingent upon. If they don't, the airport commission will be meeting next week, Tuesday, at their regular airport commission meeting, which by then, hopefully, we have the insurance adjuster's approval. If it's anything different than that, the airport commission will come back and make a new recommendation to the council.
What's the timeframe on this?
I think completion date, Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's on here, I think November 15 is our completion date. If you recall, our original intent was to have it done by Labor Day. Now with pushing it back, with rebidding it, still hope to get it done yet this fall, so November 15, I think, is our completion date. Part of the problem is with some of the steel and the items they're ordering, that's about four to six weeks out, getting some of that stuff in.
I'll make the motion to approve the contract subject to the insurance.
I'll support that.
Thank you. Last request for any comments or questions? May I have a roll call, please?
Hamel.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Next on our agenda, number four, is we will now open the public hearing, and this is on the not-to-exceed $3.4 million general obligation capital loan notes. The public hearing is now open. If anyone has a comment, please come to the podium, share your comment, please state your name.
Rick Nordal.
And, just so you know, our marks there are a little bit popcorn popping a little bit. We should be okay, but if they do pop, just speak up, please.
Okay, I will.
Thank you, Rick, I appreciate it.
Rick Nordal. Madam Mayor and Councilman, this is, of course, for the event center, and first and foremost, as a community member, a business leader, and an SCDC board member, I'd like to thank you for the planning that has gone into the development of the event center and surrounding park area. The ongoing thought, transparency in design and function along with the financing, has been well thought out, and I commend you for your efforts. Most importantly, however, is that you truly believe in this community, its amenities and the economic benefits that a facility like this will bring. And last, but certainly not least, is your true commitment to where families come first, with the investment in an event center like this. I and many others applaud the process and progress that this shows to all of our community citizens. Thank you again for believing in Sheldon, where families truly do come first.
Thank you, Rick.
Well, I'm sure you all know who I am, and I got concerns is, if I read this right, you guys want to have a bond for this center? You want to float a bond? What is this bond deal, may I ask?
Go ahead, please.
It's a general obligation capital loan note, and actually, basically, how it would be financed and paid with is with tax increment financing.
Well, wasn't, yeah, it'll be paid, but it's going to take the taxpayers' assets for the loan, so you can get a better interest rate, as I understand that right?
It's backed by general obligation or general property.
Right. Is that going to be voted on by the general public, or are you just going to shovel that through?
The project is not required to be voted on at this point.
When you mess with it, city tax dollars, our tax dollars, it don't have to be, I know that TIF money don't, but our tax dollars don't have to be approved when you go borrowing money? Is that correct?
It's referred to, as at my understanding, it's referred to as a general obligation capital loan note. It's paid due to the fact we have funds available in our urban renewal funding to pay the note.
Well, that's my question, is all the people in Sheldon for this project, nobody gets to vote on it, nobody gets to hear, it's you guys, what you tell them, all five of these guys, yes, yes, yes. It's an improvement for the town, is it? It's going to cost the town money. We've got streets, I'm not going very far with this, but we've got streets that need tremendous deal, and now you want to float a bond for 3.4 million that we're obligated for. Is the taxpayers obligated for this? If you don't make it, we're going to lose $100,000? Yeah, I don't know how you got down from 190, but that's fine. But are we going to be liable for this?
Pardon me?
It's a city project, so, yeah.
Paid for by TIF, backed by?
And the voters have nothing to say about this, but we're going to be liable for it. Thank you, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Denny.
Yeah, Marv Van Rysen, and I got a few concerns that I think we better talk about here. You're going to be voting on some money you want, and there's several things wrong with that. Number one, we haven't seen the plans and specifications yet, and they're out in the public for bid. Now, that seems a little odd or backwards. I haven't seen where the council has passed a resolution accepting the plans and specifications. Now, I've been a contractor for years, I've been involved in projects with schools and cities and so forth, excess of $30 million, $5 million, $10 million, and they always pass a resolution of accepting the plans and specifications. Now, I was at meetings where we seen different things that might go in there, but we haven't seen any plan specification. Now, has the council thoroughly looked over the plans and specifications? I think that's a fair question. Have each and every one of you looked over the plans and specifications? Zach?
Last one I saw was 95%.
95%. Randy?
I have spent a number of, the last few days.
Have you seen the plans and specifications?
Yes, I have looked over them.
Brad?
Yes.
Randy?
I saw about 95%.
Pardon me?
95% about.
And Pete, you also?
The majority.
Why haven't, why haven't this, I guess my question is, why hasn't the public been informed? I haven't seen, I would have thought that they would have been, I would have been public knowledge that they could say, hey, they're up here, you can come and see them if you want to. I haven't seen them. It's pretty common that you do that in even school systems.
You can come see them.
Oh, absolutely. We have two sets available in the city offices.
Pardon me? Anybody can.
Two sets available in the city offices.
They're available in the city office. Anybody can come pick them up.
Well, how are we supposed to know that? Does the press notify that they're in there?
We have had other people actually come in and take a look at them, too.
And ask for them.
The press wasn't knowing.
But now, Marv, I do want to let you know that at our next council meeting, we have a public hearing on approving them. They're not final yet.
When's the bidding on this thing?
The bidding would not be until two weeks.
Well, what in the world, why would the plans be out for bid already when contractors gotten a look at them, bidding them already, when the plans and specifications haven't even been approved by the city council? That bothers me.
Marv, it's no different than the airport hangar we just did.
Well, maybe if the feds work different than the state.
This is state, this is through the city. I've never seen those plans. I go off with the engineer and the?
Well, you've got to prove, you've proved the resolution.
Yes.
So you're going to approve the resolution and then quick approve the bids, is that what you're going to do?
No. Next, at our next public hearing, we'll go over the plans and specifications.
Okay.
Those are out right now, so that contractor, such as yourself, if you are like that, can go and start bidding on it.
All right, and when are you going to bid on?
Now, it's not final. Come get your papers, they're downstairs. We just told you, they're in the city office. Many people have come in and picked them up, so that.
When's the bid date?
It's not final until our next meeting in two weeks. That's when we do the finalization. Now, are they final now? No, because the contractors are going to look them over, and they'll bid them appropriately and finalize what can and cannot be exactly done. They're 95% done now.
Well, they should have been, we are, I mean, you guys shelled out money.
Excuse me, they are 100% done. I saw them at 95.
Just a minute, just a minute here. In all fairness, you shelled out a lot of money to this so-called, he's an architect, he's not an architect, he's a?
Design.
Design engineer.
Yes.
You shelled out a lot of money to him already, he should have had them 100% done.
They are 100% done.
Before they even got in this building.
They are 100% done. Last we see, they were 95, and I think that's what everyone is saying.
Then, as far as the money goes, the 5.4 million.
Yep.
Okay. In the plan, or in the specifications, I assume, this contingency fund, this fee, this really bothers some, it's $600,000. Now, I'm going to tell you something, that $600,000.
Okay, what are you talking about now?
Contingency.
Okay, thank you.
That's $600,000 in there. That is beyond the pale. That should be stripped right here tonight out of there, some of it at least. Reason being, I sat right here at the council meeting when Mr. Bell sat here, and he had, he thought he said he had something like about $300,000 figured, but Scott wanted $300,000 more, so he threw another $300,000 on there.
I don't think that's true.
Yeah, that was said.
That Scott asked.
He said that.
Okay.
Mr. Bell said that.
Well, and the other thing, you know Hopkins, but you go ahead.
The problem you got with, yeah, the problem you got with bonds when you sell this stuff is that that money has to go on that project. So if you approve a bond, you sell bond for 5.4 million, that has to be spent on that piece of property. And I've been involved in the middle school project, East Elementary project, and that worked the same way. The middle school, I think there was something like $200,000 or $300,000 contingency, that was because of some groundwork that had to be put on top to settle and so forth, and they didn't use it all, but it had to be spent there, and they kept it for a few years and bought playground equipment and so forth, because it had to be spent there. So now, what's going to happen if you have money left? Is this playtime, you just go buy anything you want?
The 3.4 million is a not-to-exceed number. We won't lock in and actually set that until we actually open our bids. We'll have a more finite number on what that amount is, Marv. So 3.4 is a not-to-exceed, I'm certainly hoping and assuming it's going to be less than that number.
Well, I'm going to tell you something, Scott, when this thing goes, when you say 3.4 million, you bring it to the bank, you're going to spend 3.4 million, okay? I mean, I've been through this, I've been around this rodeo before.
Done a lot of projects with a not-to-exceed number, that have been a lot less.
Scott, I'm telling you, pretty soon you need this, and you get this little committee thinks they need that, and right away, you got, you got all this money spent. And I think, I believe you ought to strip this away right away, and it's not funny, Randy, this is serious business. This is $5 million of taxpayers' money.
I realize that.
It's not funny one bit.
Well, this is what I'd like to put out. And you know this in construction, you know this in construction, things happen, that's why there's contingency fund. Do, do we have to spend all that? No, Marv. I would like to say that the council's been very frugal about what we spend. It's there for those just in cases, and you know those just in cases pop up in construction. Now, if we don't spend that all, you know that money will go back to help pay off.
What's your bonding attorney say about that?
Bonding attorney help us put these documents together?
What does your bonding attorney say about that question? Does that money have to be spent there, on that piece of property? Can you just get that money back, so you don't spend it?
Has to be authorized for the project as it's approved for.
Right.
Unless they would reauthorize those funds for a different purpose.
You're not answering my question, Scott. My question is, if you borrow 3.4 million dollars, and say it's, you got $500,000 left, can you just, that just gets right off the tax slate, or does it have to be spent there later? That's the question. Now, you'd have to ask your bonding attorney for that.
I believe we wouldn't borrow that much money then.
Right, right.
You're not going to know that. If you're selling, if you approve them bonds tonight.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, and we won't know until two weeks, when the bids come in.
When they sell these bonds, they'll sell, when you notify them to sell these things, they're going to do this tomorrow, more likely. If you approve this today, this thing here, you contact your bonding attorney, normally they go sell these bonds right away, is what they normally do. But nevertheless.
We can confirm that question.
Nevertheless, let's talk about this contingency fee, there's no reason why you guys can't strip that out right this evening, some of this contingency fee, there's absolutely no reason why it can't be done.
Okay. Anything more than the contingency?
I'd like to see $400,000 taken out of there. And that can be done by council action tonight. And I am a little disappointed in how the system went, I guess we're going to have to choke on it, I don't like it. I hope the council figures away how to get the money, the deficit paid, besides hitting the taxpayers up for more fees, and I can just about see that down the road, but I hope they don't try that stunt. That's about all I have for now, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Marv. Other public comments regarding the financing for the not-to-exceed $3.4 million general obligation capital loan notes? They can be positive, they can be on the fence. Last request, I'm going to share a comment. I would like it known that this is not something that happened overnight. This has been planning for over a year, if not two, if you want to bring up the actual word, "event center." All of our council meetings are open to the public. Our doors are open from 7:30 to 4:30 if you ever have questions. So I just want everyone to know that we're available here, you always have a voice, and we'll listen. We make a decision based on the best for Sheldon. Now, do we have a motion to close our public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Roll call? Sorry.
It's all right.
I jumped on that fast.
It's all right, I just need the time.
Hent.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Okay, there are three separate items underneath the general obligation capital loan notes. The first is the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the city thereunder.
Moved to approve.
Discussion?
Yeah, I got a couple things.
Go ahead.
I've been struggling with this very much in the last two weeks. We say this is a family-first community, you look at all the employers, what's their number one complaint? We don't have housing. We don't have housing, we don't get people into town, we don't grow the population. So, did the committee do a great job on a beautiful building? Absolutely, I'm not going to deny it. Do we need an event center? I think some point down the road, we do. But I think we need to take care of the things that we have going now, water tower, wastewater upgrades, we got streets that need to be improved now. Water tower, wastewater upgrades, we got streets that need to be improved now. Granted, these funds don't come out of, you know, used for streets or stuff, but we've got a lot of stuff going on. And I, I'm concerned with the way we're spending money, that we're going to run into a shortfall, and then we're going to all of a sudden have to do a tax on the citizens. We could do a franchise fee, you know, that's still a tax. And I just, I'm, I struggle with this. I mean, it's a beautiful facility, I'm not against an event center. At this time, I am. I just, I don't see where we need it right now. I think we need to concentrate on growing the community, getting business and industry into town, getting housing, and then go forward with that. But that's my opinion. Another thing is, this tax increment financing, I did some research last night on the internet, read Iowa. I tried to call Randy Feenster to get his point of view. The House, I know, has a bill going forward, it likely won't pass through the Senate, but the state is trying to limit cities from using TIF for non-taxable entities in communities. Now, are we doing, are you doing the wrong thing? Absolutely not. But if the state legislature's doing it, I mean, I question it sometimes.
I question what the state legislature does.
I think there has been an effort for a lot of years to try and address that. I guess my, my concern about that is that, I wonder what that would do to small communities versus cities, if that would ever pass. It's been, there's been the effort for many years. I think personally that it would put us at a disadvantage. I think as a small community, we would not have a lot of the things that we're able to do without that as a, as a tool. I certainly am not a lawyer, and that's just my opinion on the thing. And I also know that, yes, we have a lot of things that we need to do. We're always going to have a lot of things to do. And it doesn't, I guess it just becomes a question of what can be on the table at a given time? And, I mean, if we, if we only address one thing at a time, we're never going to get anything accomplished. And so I think we have to, have to, as a city and as a council, try and address more than one thing.
I don't think we're addressing, we're, we're not just addressing one thing. We've got many things on the plate that we're going forward with. My question on TIF is, are we going to have enough TIF funds to, let's say, an industry wanted to come in in the next six months? Are we going to be able to possibly do something with them? I mean, what is the TIF threshold?
From my vantage point, and that's been a big discussion we've had about, you know, from the bonding standpoint, we have available to us, which was even better before we started this discussion. I don't have the exact financing numbers, Anne, correct me if I'm wrong. Bonding capacity, close to seven and a half million dollars available bonding capacity. We're paying down debt, a little over, depending on how much we have available, this year we're paying off over two million dollars of debt. Standard is between one, one and a half million dollars of debt per year. The good thing we've seen is, is because of some of the growth in development that has taken place, I think because of the ability to purchase ground, put in developments, open developments, we're seeing a nice increase in our total valuation because of that development, which has allowed us to continue to move forward, to develop and do more things because of it. Such as, you know, the Aquatic Center we did with tax increment financing. We were able to pay that off actually six years in advance, which has freed up a lot of, of our debt load availability right now. Speaking with Scott Stevenson, who's from DA Davidson, separate from our Allers and Cooney attorneys that do the bonding portion of it, they feel we're in very good financial shape and condition. One of the items we talked about was doing what's referred to as an annual appropriation loan note, where only the annual amount goes against your debt capacity, just to make sure you have enough debt capacity available. Interest rate is higher on that. He says, you guys are in good financial condition, why would you even consider that? So, that's coming from the guys that look at our numbers and our financing on a regular basis, feels we're in a very good, comfortable position for this project. Now, did I run by him that we might have to spend, you know, two and a half million dollars on a water tower project? He's aware of it, they see our capital improvement plan, and our financing, and then some of the wastewater improvement upgrades. We haven't ran numbers on all those. But some of those, other than the water tower project, wastewater, and Todd can speak to that, yeah, we have some concerns going forward, but we don't, we don't know what those numbers are yet. And that's something, you know, we're going to have to work through over the next, next X number of years. So.
I would just like to say that, Randy, you do bring up some very valid points, some concerns that are in our community, roads, wastewater, water tower, all things that are going to cost money. You brought up the housing, which is a major issue. We hear that from basically all of our industry, there's not enough affordable housing. However, I struggle to see how that correlates with moving forward on an event center. They're two separate issues. I just, I just don't see how they correlate.
Well, if we have to spend money to, I mean, the city wants to do housing, we tried to get low-income housing in here, or affordable housing and stuff like that. I mean, I, I feel that the people, if we increase population, we increase tax growth, we get stronger. I don't think the city of Sheldon has the, with five thousand, has enough to support a big facility like that.
You said if we increase, we have increased population, and we have increased the tax base.
We have increased population.
Two thousand ten census showed an increase in population of?
By how many?
Three, four percent. Which is against the trend for the, if you consider the state of Iowa. And I think a lot of that comes from the development that's occurred, the pool, the park project, the downtown project. There have been a number of projects over the years that we have taken on to make this a great place to live. I am so happy with what, my experience on the SADC first, and now in the council, there have been so many good things that have happened in the last ten to fifteen years. And it's stuff that, it's amenities, it's made the community a better place. We hear all the time, we need to be more like Sioux Center, we need to be more like Orange City. Why can't we do like them? We're not Orange City, we're not Sioux Center, we are Sheldon, and we are doing great things here. I'm proud as can be of what this community has done. And this is just one more step. How it, how it plays out, what it'll spawn in terms of other development out there, we don't know that, but I have a, a good idea that'll, that more things will happen as a result of this. We have a housing initiative on our ballot, on our agenda to approve another rental event. We've been addressing that housing issue over the years. It's not a perfect thing. Debbie Durham is, in her speech last week, had said that's an issue, an Iowa problem. It's a Midwest problem, housing, workers. We keep addressing, we keep picking away at those things, and those are good problems to have, that we don't have enough housing, because, you know, the people are having to drive in. That's, and we're working at that. We haven't, we don't just ignore those things. All this has been done to make Sheldon a better place, and this is just one more of those things.
The affordable housing topic has been on city agendas for many years, and there've been a lot of efforts to try and find solutions to it. It's easy to talk about and very hard to do, and we should look at doing that. I don't disagree with that at all, but it doesn't mean you exclude everything else until you find a solution to that.
Thank you. One of the questions, you know, Randy, you asked, do we have enough? If we were to do this project, would there be enough? If some kind of industry came in? And I think that shows where we're at, as far as our bonding capacity and the way we're paying things down, we're not spending, it still leaves money in the bank.
I guess the other thing that I've been, excuse me.
No, you're fine.
The other thing that I've been very impressed with, I'm, I'm still in awe of, is the, the way the private sector has stepped up to this particular project. I can't think of anything, since I've lived here, that, where people have stepped up like they have to this. I can't think of a project.
Just one of the comments, actually, from the Vision Iowa standpoint, that was a big discussion we had, you know, talking about having a long laundry list of donors and supporters and pledges on the project. One thing they were impressed with, we had on there, and Kurt, correct me if I'm wrong here, of our largest employers on there, virtually every one of them in the top ten was a financial supporter of a pledge towards Event Center project. So they reiterated and liked to see that. Yeah, you like to see the individual pledges. One of the things they did see and that we talked about was that we went to our largest employers, that instead of going up to all their employees, they wanted to represent for their employees, support of a project of the Event Center. So, that's coming from the Vision Iowa folks that work with these projects day in, day out. Yeah, all the financial institutions were on board. Correct.
So here's a question then, Denny, raise the thing. If so many people are for this project, why wouldn't we bring it to a vote? It's just a question.
The financing would be the mechanism, that's the only requirement, if you wanted to, to bring the financing to a vote.
Correct. But if, if, if the majority in, as way it's being sound, the majority of the public wants it, and I'm not going to argue with that at all. If they want this, so, I mean, if they're in agreements with it, and we're going to lose a hundred thousand plus every year on this facility, why wouldn't we want to bring it to a vote?
Two, two major reasons, at this point, from my vantage point, is, is the funding that we have lined up. The eight hundred and forty thousand dollar Vision Iowa CAT grant potentially could be in jeopardy by moving it back to a, to a vote. We'd have to, we, one of the requirements is a sixty day requirement of having the financing lined up to them. Go back and ask if we wanted to push that back, the potential jeopardy that they say, well, we're not going to leave eight hundred and forty thousand dollars sit out there, we're going to spend it on another project. Also, we'd have to go back to all the donors and the pledges, some of those were contingent upon the project moving forward in this year. We, at minimum, have to go back and make sure they're still on board with financially supporting the project. So, that's one, from the financial standpoint, what's been committed to the project, we'd certainly have to address.
I also think that, how do I want to say this? We know when we make the decisions, we can't please everybody. We never will. We know there's people who are opposed, and they've spoken out. Which, you know, I appreciate, share your opinions. I'm loving this discussion right now. This is, it's nice to hear, bring out these comments, let's have the talks right here in front of that camera, in front of the people who are here, let's make our decisions. But I personally, out and about in town, maybe, maybe twenty people have spoken out against it. And I've probably had three or four times as many people speak for it. So, I know that when we're in this seat, when we're elected into these chairs, we know the decisions that we're going to make are best, are based on, we're going to try to please everybody. We're going to please them all? I'm sorry. Love to, because that's the kind of person I am. But I know we're not going to please everybody. So, base, my thought is, based on the ones who have spoken up, I appreciate that, but so far, my own self and the talkings I've had with people, the majority are for it.
Building off that, I would like to say too, that going forward with this, we know that it's a risk. We know that there's a pretty good probability that it is going to cost us money every year. There's going to be a deficit there that we're going to have to come up with, find the funding to make it work. Now, that number could be bigger, it could be smaller, we don't know. But one thing moving forward with this? I don't see it hindering any new businesses coming in. In fact, I see it being a positive to draw businesses in.
I think from the, from what I've heard is, there's people interested in going out there once this thing's built.
Right.
So, I mean, we have some speculation there that might happen. We've talked about, a month ago or two weeks ago, about how we're going to finance some of the, the operations. We've discussed that, we've, we've made up the majority of that. So I just think it's a win situation for us out there. I mean, we're developing that area of town, and I think it's going to be a bonus. And yes, we hear that every year, the state's going to take away that TIF funding. That's been going on as long as I've been on the council, every year you hear that. I just think it's going to be a good asset to the community out there.
I had one person that approached me about the idea, why would the city do something that's not going to make money? My answer to that is, what does a city do that makes money? Name one thing. Parks don't make money, streets don't make money, they, they might be attractive, but they don't make money. Cities don't do things that makes money. Now, you have to try and balance that on what's affordable. What kind of amenities can we provide to people? Can we be a Sioux Falls? No, but let's be the best we can be.
Thank you, everyone, for all your comments and your discussion. Is there any more we need to, we would like to share right now? Again, we are on new business, line four, item A, the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the city thereunder. We do have two motions on the table. All I need is a roll call, and I will be taking that.
Just.
Go ahead.
There's only one motion.
There's a second.
There's a motion and a second.
Yeah, we had a motion and a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's a motion and a second.
There's a motion and a second on this side.
Thank you for clarifying that. There's a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please? Hamel.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Funker.
No.
Gills.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Thank you. We're going to move on then to the next item. That would be considering the resolution, and I'm going to read this. This resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed three million four hundred thousand dollars of general obligation capital loan notes. Go ahead, Brett.
No, go ahead.
I was just stating, this is by resolution, to institute the proceedings to take additional action for the issuance not to exceed three point four.
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution. Support.
Thank you. Discussion.
So basically, this is the same topic, you're just, this is the resolution that?
Three required items from my bond council, correct.
Thank you. No further discussion, no questions? May I have a roll call, please? Gills.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Funker.
No.
Sawyer.
Aye.
And then the last part is considering approval of bond, excuse me, bond, council engagement agreement. Can you elaborate on that, Scott? What exactly, it's just a third?
Basically, our agreement with our bond council, who does basically all of our legal work for us, of basically giving them approval to proceed on the documents.
Thank you. I know you gave it to us, but I don't see it in my file.
They just want the authorization approval by council instead of just staff doing it.
Thank you. So this is the approval of the bond council engaging in the agreement.
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Request for any questions or comments?
Comment would be that we're proceeding in a order here, but at some point, we may get a surprise like we did on the airport hangar, and then we'll have to readdress this whole process.
Exactly.
But we have to continue on the road to find out, to get to that place.
Right. It's not.
The concept I love, we don't have.
Definitive numbers.
We have to get to the final numbers, and we can't get there without going through a procedure.
Right.
And this is part of that procedure.
We won't institute proceedings until following the bids and stuff on the project. If all of a sudden it's, yeah, way out of whack, we certainly will have additional conversations, just like, like you said, the airport, so.
Okay, any other comments to my right? Questions? Comments, questions? May I have a roll call, please? Sawyer.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Funker.
No.
Hamel.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on, number five in new business is the consideration of resolution of financial support for the CAT grant. And this financial support is in the amount of three million one hundred seventy-three thousand two hundred and seventy-six.
Just to quickly clarify, Mayor, if you recall, when we applied for the Vision Iowa CAT grant, we had a resolution of support that was included in that. That number was actually closer to three point four million that we actually included at that point in time. So this is actually quite a bit lower number, but it's actually, this, the gap that we needed to fill from the eight hundred and forty thousand dollars that Vision Iowa approved, up to the eight hundred ninety-eight thousand dollar gap that we had left, basically our fundraising city matched towards the project. So they're asking us to submit as part of official documents, before we sign the contract, a resolution of support, basically showing right now on our project estimated cost of what our city match is. That make sense?
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry, it is to me.
Good.
Anybody have questions?
Satisfied with it.
Yep.
Make a motion. Support.
Thank you, gentlemen. Do you have questions regarding the financial support for the CAT grant? Comments? May I please have a roll call? Hent.
Aye.
Funker.
No.
Hamel.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Okay, number six on our agenda, considering the request to utilize the tree dump area. We have received word from that party that they have possibly found another location to host their event. So right now, they, no action is being taken, they do not have a request for us, okay? So number six, no action is being taken. Number seven on the agenda, the consideration of the Iowa Department of Transportation Agreement for Maintenance and Repair of Primary Roads, something standard that we do every how many years, Phil?
Five or so.
Five or so, and it pretty much spells out who's responsible for what. Do you have any questions regarding the agreement?
Were there any changes from the last one, Major, to speak of?
No, it's the same thing, as far as utilities and whatnot, who's going to be responsible for what? So Todd, the DOT, which we have a close working relationship with, and our street department have an understanding of who's doing what. So it is, has not changed.
Great. Thank you. So then, do we have a motion to approve that agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation?
Make that motion.
Make that motion.
Support.
Thank you. Any last questions, comments? May I have a roll call, please? Kent?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Funker?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Thank you. Number eight, the consideration of payment, pay estimate number two on the sludge piping modification. How's that all going, Todd? Thumbs up? Thank you. The second payment is for the amount of $31,449.
Make a motion to approve that pay estimate number two? Support.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? You got a thumbs up?
Winding down?
Pray me?
That project winding up?
This, this actually finalizes everything with cash flow except for the $2,500.
Retainment?
And the only reason that I was asking for that yet is because the electrical work
is not done, so we actually haven't fired the plumbing order yet. So, the electrical work, the VFD comes in next week, and then the electrical work will be done, and then the maintenance operations, plumbing operations. That's basically just the mission of all the plumbing portion of the project. Be a separate contract with the big micro...
Sure. True. Yep.
So, this would be retaining as well then? Or, because it's balance to finish, plus retained, it's listed as 2,500s.
Yeah. All the holding back is 2,500.
Okay.
Which their contract was 3,700. We've been slightly different with those, Greg, because we're actually not using an engineer for pay requests and for inspection services for this project. So, we save some money for the engineer. I'm comfortable with the 2,500 until we get it done.
Yep, make sure ours up and works.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion approved.
Support.
We have a motion and a second. Yeah, there's a motion. We're having discussion. It's okay. I just, I was double checking, too. So many notes. Any other questions? Comments? Roll call, please. Hamel?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Funker?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Number nine on the agenda, considering approval for Mid-American utility extension. This is in the Runniger Edition, and if we now pay for that, let me get to that page, and that is this amount of $1,810.55. Extending 300 feet of a three-phase primary cable to the three-phase junction box. Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve, then, the utility extension by Mid-American in the amount of $1,810.55?
So moved.
Thank you.
Support.
Comments? Roll call, please. Kent?
Aye.
Funker?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Number 10 on our agenda is considering the application for a tax abatement, and this is in the Trilogy Multi-Residential Urban Revitalization Plan. This is the four-unit complex that the Van Rukel Rentals will be putting up. Do you have any questions regarding the tax abatement? If you do not have any questions or comments, is there a motion to approve the application for tax abatement?
I'll move to approve that.
Support.
Thank you.
Just to comment, too, this is the second set of four that they're doing, correct?
Third. Third. This is third of four.
Third set of four. Just to the north, correct?
Yes.
Correct. Next to the other two.
So, the first, obviously, it's working out well for them.
They're full.
He contacted me, he's very pleased, been able to keep them full, and he was excited to get going on another one, so...
It's nice to see a project moving along.
And filled, yes. Okay, any other comments then regarding the tax abatement for the Trilogy Multi-Residential Urban Revitalization Plan? May I have a roll call, please? Sawyer?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Funker?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Thank you. And the last is a, consider, is, consider the request to serve on the ICMA Planning Committee. Scott has been attending this, but now he's asked to serve on that committee, so, go ahead, you share what you do there.
I currently serve on the Iowa City Managers Association Board of Directors, and every year, one of the members of the board is asked to serve on the ICMA, which is International City Managers Association Planning Committee. And I've been asked if I would be willing to serve in that capacity. I've been actually on the board a few years, so, they kinda do a rotation, so, it's the point of asking if I wanna serve. The Iowa City Managers Association provides a $750 stipend in talking to the individual that went last year. He spent probably about $250 to $300 more than what the stipend covered. So, what I would ask is if the city, and the reason I'm bringing it for approval is because it's maybe, it's fall under education and training budget, is asking if the city would cover that gap difference to allow me to attend that planning committee meeting for ICMA.
I gave him my blessing.
Move us, yeah.
You have a second?
Sure.
Now I'll comment. Scott usually asks if he can go to these retreats, and yes, but we brought it up just because it will cost a little bit.
It's different than the normal, the training sessions that I've gone to, so...
Thank you for that. Thank you. Any questions regarding this?
Did you say international city managers?
Yeah, it's ICMA, it's international, so there's actually a pretty large contingent. Like, the conferences I go to, generally, there's between 3,500 and 4,000 manager administrators that actually attend this. So, it's part of the planning committee, there'll actually be people from other countries that come to the meetings.
When is that conference?
December...
December 2 through 4 is the planning committee meeting.
Said he won't pay for any golf, though.
Never have, don't worry.
Yeah, we don't wanna see the receipt.
Unless you want to.
Unless you say I can, okay.
So, this is December 2 through 4. The annual conference is usually in the fall of each year. This year, it's in Kansas City in September. Then the following year will be that planning committee planning for the following year of 2017, so...
Yep. All right, thank you for that discussion. May I have a roll call, please? Hamel?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
My left?
City cleanup days. Are they coming up?
They're in your water bill, but Ange will share the dates, when that time is, do you know?
Do you have a calendar?
Yeah. But people have asked... Excuse me. People have asked when the city cleanup is. It is in your water bill. There's a flyer to remind you, but they will be on April...
No.
May?
West of Washington Avenue, I believe, is starting May 2, and east of Washington Avenue starts May 9.
Thank you.
No, that's not right either, because that's Mother's Day. Is it the 16th and the 23rd?
It's coming.
Sorry.
It's coming up. I better read, I better open my water bill.
Yeah, it's put in the water bill this time.
Contact city offices if you need to know more information.